Leading to order, the seven o'clock rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two, full call please.
Councilmember Yankel.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzino.
Here.
Councilmember Jandovic.
Here.
And Mayor Boar.
I'm here. Before we do the consent agenda, we're going to turn the mic over to Officer Dustin Brown.
Don't think I do that. Good evening, Mayor Boar.
Thank you.
Members of the City Council and City Staff, as many of you have been informed, I've recently accepted the job in the City of Granville Police Department and will be resigning from the City of Lowell. As I close in on my final tour of duty with this fine department, it has become clear how hard it will be to walk out the door for the last time. Although I look forward to my future career with the Granville Police Department, I will never forget where I came from. I came to the Lowell Police Department in 2012 when Chief Buqua was gracious enough to give me a job. I worked part-time for a year and a half. During that time, I was able not only to improve my skill as an officer, but grow as a person. In 2013, I was fortunate enough to obtain a full-time position with the department, and I've worked in that capacity for the past five years. I've done my best to serve this department and city with honor and integrity. When I look back to when I first started my career and compare it to where I am now, I owe much more than I can offer to Chief Buqua and this department. Or if it wasn't for them, I may not have the opportunity that stands in front of me today. The City of Lowell is a wonderful place to work. The citizens are greatly supportive of this department, and it shows throughout the year. Our break room is constantly flooded with generous gifts with food, snacks, and random acts of kindness. I've also received more thank you cards and letters than I can count. In closing, my family and I thank you. We thank you, we thank the department, the city, and the great citizens of this community for allowing me to serve you. We appreciate everything you have done for us. And I don't know how I can ever repay you. I only hope that during my tenure here, my service was up to standard. I will forever owe you my gratitude, and I thank you. Thank you for your service. Good luck.
All right, now, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
No support?
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Yankel.
Yes.
Mayor Boar.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzino.
Yes.
Councilmember Jandovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen council, item is now on the agenda. All right, I'd force update Lowell business, Michael.
On Friday, we met with Pryden Newhoff and were able to see first draft of a capital improvement plan to where we can tie in the sanitary storm sewer improvements along with water main improvements and some road improvements. This is a small portion of what the entire plan encompasses, but this small portion will start giving us an idea as to where we can, where we can go forward. So what I want to do is show you what they showed us. And the first thing I want to show you is this map of basically the city. So I'll kind of, I'll kind of detail it for you a little bit. Any area that's boxed in with either blue or green, blue and green or blue or green, these are where we can do road, water, water main improvements, sanitary and storm sewer improvements. If you see all those purple dots on the map, those are spot repairs to the, to the storm drain, I'm sorry, to the sanitary sewer, and then all the green dots prioritize would handle where they can do spot repairs to the, to the storm sewer. So where you see these areas, mainly your main area, your largest areas are obviously Monroe and Washington, but you also have another major project over off of Amity, Chatham, and Smith Streets. And then you have a couple there on the south of the city along Main. The one on Main, that would be a, that's actually that light green, that's basically a liner where they would just place liner in rather than replacing the whole sewer main. And then some of these that are just flat blue, which I know is kind of hard to see, are just water main projects. Most of the water main projects can be done in future years. With this information, it basically tells us at this point what are, what are the, what are, what projects we can do. And then what they also did was they did prioritize them based on criticality, meaning the need, the need to replace them in a timely fashion. And I'll get to that in a second, but these are the areas, these are the areas where we can do underground improvement along with replace streets. And one of the, one of the things we can do is we can utilize a large portion of our sewer and water main funds to replace the streets. We still have to, I'll get into a second, but we would still have to replace, we would still have to use some street funds to replace these streets, but it gives us a start. So by getting, basically by getting this information, they were able to put this into a, basically a 15-year plan as to how to tackle these projects. From that, we can also, we can also start tying in how much money we would have for streets and tie that, and tie that into a separate street, street plan. Because if you, if you see, most of the, most of the underground improvements, it's a small port, I mean, it's, while there's a lot of different small spots in regards to major replacements of the underground infrastructure, it's only, only in small pockets throughout the city to where you're going to do that. So what it's going to, what it's going to require is an awful lot more funds that we need to have on hand in order to fix the rest of the streets throughout the city. So I'll get to that in a second. So this just, this is that map that just shows you this. What we did from that is Pryden Newhoff did prioritize the projects, and I gave each of you a copy of that in front of you as to how these projects could be prioritized based on critical need. And if you look, kind of just walk you through it, 2000, we could, in 2019, we could do some lining projects, do a couple of the spot repairs. We could also possibly do Monroe from Main to King. And then in 2020, what they proposed is possibly Monroe from King to Pine. 2021, we could do Monroe from Fremont to Pine. Then in 2022, we could, we could address Washington, Lincoln Lake, and the areas on the map that we talked about. 2023, they could go back to Washington from Grant to North. They could do West from Bowes to Main. Lincoln Lake from Foreman to Hunt in 24. In 25, 2025, we could do Avery from Jefferson to Jackson. Also Main Street from West to Pleasant. And then out in 2026, Kent from Monroe to Washington. 2027, we could do Jackson from Front to Kent. Also Jefferson from Kent to May. And then 2028, they would propose Lincoln Lake from Mercer to Elizabeth Lake, I'm sorry, Elizabeth. And 29, King Street from Lafayette to Washington. 2030, Creekside Park between Faith and G. 2031, between Lincoln Lake and Hudson on Godfrey. 2032, we could do High Street west of Grove. And then 2033, we could do Grindel south of Fun. And Grindel from Jackson to Division. These are, and it also spells out in your sheet as to what the project would be. A lot of it, a lot of it's mixed. Some of it's water main and sanitary, some of it's just sanitary, some of it's just water main. But all of it can have street replacements to it. So this gives us a starting point. Now, necessarily doesn't have to be this way. We can modify it any way we want as we move forward, but this is, this is kind of a starting point. And in this, Pryden Newhoff gave us basically an estimate to do these projects. So what this doesn't take into account, this, this sheet here tells out the total project cost and breaks it down by which fund you could use. We haven't also, at this point, we still, we still are trying to analyze, we're going to take these numbers and we're going to analyze these into rate calculations to determine if we need to raise rates to fund these projects. That, that remains to be seen, but we at least have a starting point as to estimated cost to do this. Now, what you see is if you look at these projects, if you look at the road projects, the amount of money in comparison to the total projects is relatively small percentage-wise. It's roughly in most assets, most cases, about 20% of your cost and for most projects. Also, if you see, there's a funding stores for storm. We have money set aside, that's for storm sewer improvements. Remember that we can't use sanitary font, sanitary wastewater funds to address storms. So those storm water would actually have to come out of the general fund to, 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 to do those projects. So this kind of gives you an idea of the preliminary project costs just for the underground infrastructure. And over the, over a 10-year period, that's about $4.4 million. And if you look at your road funds each year, it's relatively small amount. Something that we talked about was we have, we have basically this starting point. So now we have to figure out what, based on how many road dollars we have, how many streets we can actually do. That's kind of the next step, is I need to give Williams and Works basically an idea as to how much money we have for street improvements, and then they could put a, they could put plans together based off that. One thing about the SAW project is once this capital, once these capital improvements eventually get approved, we can use, we can commingle our Act 51 dollars. Kind of explain to you how that works. We get roughly, right now, I want to say this year, we'll probably get about $369,000 in Act 51 funds. And we're, we're going to see an increase over the next three, four years. And after you take your expenditures, because you do have a number of operating costs. A lot of our public works functions are funded out of, mostly out of local streets. A lot of our, so then your winter maintenance, all of that stuff, all of those tasks, they come out of, they come out of the major and local street fund. So after that, you have X amount that you can use towards streets without us doing anything. So what I did was I calculated how much we could get just by, if we did nothing, if we just, if we just continued to make, if we didn't do anything for our streets or anything like that. If you, I put this spreadsheet together, and what I did was currently this year, we do a hundred, we do a general fund transfer of about $100,000 into the local street fund. One thing I forgot to mention is when you get your, when you get your Act 51 funds, that $369,000 I talked about, 75% of those funds by law have to go into the major street fund. Major streets is only about 6.89 miles of streets in the city where the remaining 25% goes into the local street fund. It's done by a mathematical formula, but roughly 25% of that $369,000 goes in, can go into your local streets. And so that's a relatively small amount. So that's why for a number of years, we've been making transfers into the general, from the general fund to the local street, basically to accommodate the expenditures of that fund. But with the SAW grant, now, we can commingle those funds to do capital, to do road projects. So what I've done is I projected out our, our Act 51 dollars. I also projected out roughly going forward, roughly $150,000 general fund transfer, which is about, based on if we restructure the budget, when we restructure the budget this year, that, then I think we can do. You have, just going forward by doing, by, by not seeking any additional revenue, you have about, that's, that bottom line there shows you how much you have for the next 10 years annually to put to streets. So while we are seeing some money each year, for, for example, for fiscal year 20, you'd be projected to have about $235,000. You can't do much with that. I mean, that might do half a block of street. It's not going to do a very large amount of street, but what I can do, what I plan on doing is at least show, having Dave from, Dave Austin from Williams and Works taking that amount, those numbers, and put a plan together for street improvements with those amounts. You're going to see that you also have to take into account, if you go back to the previous spreadsheet, some of that money from those projects would have to come out of this Act 51 dollars, which could fund, most years could fund, be able to fund all of what's proposed on, for the underground improvements, but it doesn't give you much more after that. So what I also did was I took our, if we were to move forward, I know we've had discussions about city income tax. I, I was able to do a spreadsheet over the weekend to calculate how much we could receive from city income tax if we reduced the mileage rate, four mils and five mils. So I just want to walk you through that sheet. So what I did was I took our projected income tax amounts based off of what Great Lakes Economics Group projected for us over the, over the last 10 years. I then took into account the expenditure that would need to be made to offset the four mil reduction, which what I basically did in these years was took a taxable value increase of about 1.5% annually. And that gives me my, that gives me my four mil reduction. I also took in an administrative cost, because you will have administrative costs, which, which what this doesn't take into account might actually go down quite a bit because your first year cost might be higher than your other years, but on a conservative approach, I, I just took the first year, added 3%, annually to that amount to get, to get those administrative costs. So by the time I subtracted these two amounts, this is what I had annually for streets. And if you commingle that with the Act 51 dollars you would get, that you'd be able to use, on a four, on a four mil reduction or a five mil reduction, these are the amounts you could get. So if you're looking, I mean, you just look at fiscal year 21, if you were to do this, you'd have about a million, little over a million dollars a year to do streets. You'd have quite a bit. You'd have quite a bit if you went for four mils to do the streets. You might actually be, you might actually be better off of actually just taking a five mil reduction to where if you commingle these funds, it's a, it's a, it's a greater, it's a greater savings for the, for the, for the property owner on their property by going from four to five mils. And the projected amounts from the, from the five mil reduction would give you still, for, for at least for the first three years, you would implement roughly $900,000, little over $900,000 annually for streets, which then over time increases to about, by 10 years out, you have about a million four, a million four for streets. So, and recognize too with, with the income tax, obviously, these are projections. So one of the, one of the issues with city income tax is you never really can, it's a lot harder to project annually in comparison to a property, to your property valuations, because those are usually pretty, pretty solid. But if you were to do this, you could get, you could get quite a bit of streets done. So what my next step would be is to go back to Dave Austin, show him these numbers and have him put street plans in place with those amounts to show you what you could do. That's where we're at right now. We've still got a lot of work on our end to try and put these plans more concrete. One, we also have to have a, you know, we also have to still figure out how we're going to pay, how to pay for the underground improvements, because we haven't, we just got a dollar amount this year. We just haven't figured out how we're going to pay for it yet, just like the streets. We know how much we can, we can, we can do. We're just not, we're just not quite there yet. So those are the things that we're working on right now, and hopefully, we have something more concrete in the next two, three months. Anyone else have questions?
And just to clarify for the audience, each you mentioned looking at that might have to be raised are the sewer and water rates.
Correct. Yeah. We will have to do an inflationary increase this year, but it doesn't take into account these things. Because we haven't raised, we haven't done an inflationary rate in two years. But this gives you a kind of an idea of what you can and cannot do. And if you look, if you look, I mean, if you look at what we have right now, if we do nothing, there's really not much we can cut unless you want to, unless the City Council really wants to start continuing, start thinking about drastically eliminating services to address your street needs.
I, I think we've already cut pretty much everything with Ken. City staff has done a great job of doing more with less and maintaining services. There's no meat left on the bone I don't think to cut.
Yeah, I make the recommendation you continue to look into this, Mike, and bring more, more.
I'll bring more information as we move forward.
All right, any other questions for Mike?
Are we still trying to get this on the November ballot?
We're working on, we're working on trying to get that for you to decide, yeah.
That would be really helpful, I think.
We're trying to work very hard on it.
Have you gotten everything, have you gotten everything to collect, to catch them up on SAW, all the stuff from before?
I had gotten him the income tax study. I mean, really the SAW stuff, this is what, he probably, he was briefed on orientation, he's got about what you have.
Okay, anything else on that one?
Nope.
All right.
New business, I made a presentation on Lowell Township water and sewer rates.
Peter's here to explain to you. Back in 2017, we set, we had a very, we had a, we had a request, an inquiry from Lowell Township to look greater into their, into their sewer rate. There was a significant spike in a very short period of time as to what their rate was. And at the time, we believed there might have been some miscalculation, so we went back. And it took us quite a bit of time to, to sort through this and be able to put ourselves to correct it to make sure it matched with the current methodologies. And Peter's here tonight to, to explain to you what we did and what, how we're, how we're going to, how we're going to correct this. So I'm going to turn this over to Peter.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'm going to ask Mike to kind of click through the slides as, as we go. And I thought I'd give you a brief background, and, and Mike was able to say it. There was an initial question from the township, your wholesale customer, saying, well, why did our rate increase so much for sewer? That was in 2017, and at that point, I came in and we took a look at the rate calculation. And we identified some simple reasons why the rate went up substantially. One was that the SAW grant was being included in the expense that was being charged for the township. So the expenses associated with the SAW grant were not being offset with the revenues from the state for that SAW grant, causing a spike in the rate calculation. And at that time, we determined that, hey, let's take a look at the rate calculation for wastewater, because there are some other factors that haven't been included in the calculation due to changes in accounting principles. So initially, the township had a question, and then the city basically said, take a look at the rate calculation, and we worked with a number of your staff, and we looked, kind of looked from a high level. And then following that high level look, we saw some issues with the calculation. And then your staff and a number of your service providers got together and looked at the rates, looked at what are the implications of the rates going forward with your water and sewer operations, and ultimately determined, hey, we need to take a deep look at these rates. And then talk to the, talk to the township or your wholesale customer about these rates. So would you go to the next slide for me? So our initial rate look, see, was that large fluctuation in 17 and, and to a large extent, it was that SAW grant. There were also some capital assets that weren't capitalized, which were expense, resulting in those expenses being allocated to your wholesale customers driving up the rate, and it was identified as an issue. Also during this high level look, see, we looked at your agreement with the township, and in the case, I believe, water, you had the water contract, and then you had the first modification and the second modification. Similar with your sewer contracts, so we went into quite a bit of detail. And at this high level, we also realized that we have talked historically about some changes in the pension recording and some changes in the other posted point of benefit reporting. And those implications from an accounting perspective were affecting the rates as well, yet no cash goes out the door. So there's some non-cash transactions that weren't considered in the rate agreement themselves that needed to be factored out.
How much was the rate increase, did it go up 25% for the year?
I think it was 30%.
Yeah, it went up from, it went up from, was it $1.65, it went to $1.87, then it went to $2.65.
Yeah, the $2.65.
That was a trigger. And understand, there were some issues with the calculations. It wasn't, we weren't, being that a lot of this occurred when the manager, when the change in managers occurred, some things were, some things were kind of off in how they even got their rates. So, and then there were some other calculations that we can get to in a minute.
Yeah, so the people that got together and took a look at this were your city manager, your treasurer staff, finance staff, your public works folks, as well as the city attorney, your professional engineer, myself, certified public accountant, as well as your financial advisor. And so there were a lot of people looking at this. A key player was Mike and your attorney, Dick Lamb. We went through your contract line by line, and what are the implications of this, and what are the implications of this? What are the implications of the new accounting standards? So looking through there, and looking at how the rate had been historically calculated, we identified that there were some things that needed to be addressed. So we recalculated your wastewater rate initially, and the things that we identified were, there was some grant funding in there. There were industrial pretreatment charges that were being charged to businesses in the city, but there was no credit being given to the township and reduced costs. And then those accounting standard changes that we noted, system capital improvement, capitalization issues. And then a lot, a lot of effort to make sure that the exact terms of the agreement were being followed. So we recalculated what the water rates, or the wastewater rate should have been for 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and factored out these items that were new accounting standard changes or just errorlessly calculated, or in some cases, the calculation was calculated just fine, but there was capital additions to the wastewater system. Those capital additions, the township needs to make you hold for those. So they need to pay you, so it kind of works both ways. But this whole effort results in the rate agreement that was agreed to being followed for those years and going forward as well. We also, at that point in time, we said, let's take a look at the water rates. And so everyone was in agreement, let's look at these if we're going to be modifying the rates in the city. Let's make sure the rate calculation is being done accurately. There was a model developed by an external firm a number of years ago that was used to calculate the water rates, and there were some errors in the calculation itself. Again, capital asset play into water. In the case of water, you finance the infrastructure, then your wholesale rate payer will reimburse you for those costs plus a rate of return, kind of an interest. And, and only specific assets will be charged to the wholesale customer. And only specific assets will be charged to the wholesale customer. So, the differentiation in the assets between those that are chargeable and not chargeable was not being tracked for a number of years. So, we went back and made sure we had all those in order. And then, we looked at allowable costs, and again, the accounting standards change impacted the water rates. So, the water rates were just calculated back 15, 16, 17. And so, we put together a preliminary summary report, which was really just a memo with the rate calculations. And myself, and your staff, and your attorney, and the township team got together in this room. And we walked through, here are the things that we found that were issues with the contract, want to bring them to your attention. We think we should change some terms of the contract because the contract no longer addresses the accounting standards that you're following in some cases. And there's some things that aren't good about your contracts, such as the water rate would go into effect in January, and the wastewater rate would go into effect in June, and it was just more cumbersome for staff. But if we just did it once, one time a year, we can get together, take a look at it together, and move forward. So, that was shared with all at the meeting, and I think the township team was very receptive to, okay, we understand that we owe you some money for capital, they agreed to make payment on that, we understand that there were, the charges were in excess for a few years, and we'll get credit for that over a period of one year. So, we're at the point where the water calculation is calculated, we know what the credit to the township would be, it's about $60,000. That $60,000 was actually accounted for in your last audit, so it won't be, impact your bottom line this year. So, when we were talking about your audit, Mr. Canfield had a question about what's, what was the change in the water and wastewater revenues for the current year? And I said, that's the result of an allowance for your wholesale contract. So, at the time of your audit, it was understood that likely there was a credit of about $60,000 to the township due to that. And also, there was a credit to the township for wastewater for approximately $60,000 a year end. Now, there's been a change in the calculation of the rate, so that credit will actually be larger. Going the other way, the township owes you approximately $250,000 for capital for the wastewater system. And as the projects proceed, that'll change, obviously. But historically, through the end of last year, they were about $250,000. And you accrued $60,000 in water and wastewater to their credit. And the wastewater, at this point, I'd show as about approximately $120,000. There are two assets, we still need to determine whether the township needs to reimburse you for those, those are the oxidation digits.
Oxidation digits.
So, when those are addressed, we should be able to come up with final numbers. Mike asked me to come to kind of just walk you through the process, who was involved, what are the findings? And also kind of bring to your attention that likely there'll be some modifications to the contract, just to identify the fact that we're in agreement now that the rates will change at one time of the year versus twice. And some of the non-accounting standard, or the accounting standards issues could be addressed in the contract agreement. So, it's very kind of mechanical, put in the numbers, turn the handle, and grind it out. Some things that were also identified during this process, not to go on and on about it, but some of the accounting not standards change. So, when people's positions changed or management changed, people maybe were recorded in a different location in your financial information, and that impacts the rates. So, hopefully, all of that is addressed with the recalculation of those rates and going forward. We have the rates calculated for next year, share those with the township. Am I missing anything, Mike?
No, yeah, I mean, the townships, they're not, to my knowledge, they're not contested. They were, when we presented this information to them, they understood it, they were appreciative, we brought it to them. And we're going to work through it. Peter's going to go to their next township board meeting, present this to them, and so they have an understanding as to what happened.
And hopefully, at that point, it shouldn't take a lot of time. We can narrow down those last few items, I think they're related to sewer, and have, you know, the final, here's the calculation, here are the rates going forward. We've modified the model that you've historically used for the calculation of your rates, we've updated, updated the fixed asset information so that you can calculate those rates. I would suspect everybody on the city side is much more knowledgeable about those agreements because they're before many people's kind.
Yeah, that was part of it too. With the change, we had a change in management, we had a lot of new people who were not familiar with how this was done. And then, find out that things weren't probably properly accounted according to the methodology for a number of years that caused, just caused, caused us to learn a lot about it.
Sure. Just for perspective, you mentioned that the sewer and the water were both about a $60,000 adjustment. What is there annual bill? I've heard you say $250,000.
I can tell you, in the case of the township wastewater, it's approximately $100,000 in 13.
Okay.
And in 15, or I would say 17, $73,000. So, it really fluctuates based on operating expenses, or if there were some activities where it's operating oriented. But that's what your records show.
$60 is a pretty big number, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Now, keep in mind, that's over, that's over a five-year period, so $15,000 a year, what have you. And so, the years when it would spike would be if there was, let's say, a lot of industrial pretreatment, and there was no reduction on the expense side that were allocated to the township associated with that treatment activity. So, that was a big charge at one time. And we'll be coming back online as well.
And something to remember, the township does owe us quite a bit for capital. For example, they weren't, they have not been assessed yet for the Broadway improvements that, they have 18%, they have 18% ownership or capacity in our wastewater treatment plant. So, anything, any project that impacts them, they're responsible, they're responsible for 18% for. A lot of this, like I said, happened during the change in managers, managers, where they weren't, they weren't charged. We've done both oxidation digits, about $100,000 each, each project roughly, so 18% of that. We were, we also took into account, we did some list stations, there was one list station that really didn't, wasn't really their project, didn't impact them, they weren't charged for that. We backed that up where, in previous calculations, they were being charged for. So, even though you'll have a credit on the wastewater end, basically, what that'll just do is reduce what they owe us, rather than us having to cut them a check. And then, what we'll do on the water end, basically, is over a year, year, probably kind of over a year period, they would, they would just, we would just credit on 1/12 of that amount every month for the next year, and they were, they were fine with that.
Yeah, it doesn't really have any significant impact on our.
No, no, especially on the water end, does it?
Mike, was this for both townships or just Lowell?
We only have an agreement with Lowell Township. The way it works, just so you understand, the way our agreement works is, Lowell Township, they buy their water wholesale from us, and then they also have 18% capacity from us, so they're charged, they're charged on that. But what they do, what they in turn do is they sell water wholesale to Virgin Township, mainly for the school and for that property, the other, the new development on the other side of Alden Nash. But there's no sewer for that project, there's only sewer for the high school.
Any other questions?
Thank you. The other one, do we feel we're covered and we won't have this kind of mishap in the future, and we got everything we need to have, Mike?
I think, yeah, I think we're, now we're in a much better position. One of the things I think, by having Peter involved helping us calculate the rate helped us a lot. We had different auditing firms for a period of time, they were calculating a different, Peter had been doing this calculation for a number of years, then we changed auditors, rate change, and then, my understanding, my predecessor was calculating the rates, and it was, it was a different calculation.
Thank you.
Everybody good there? All right, now, item number B, officially open the public hearing, consider removing a portion of Riverside Park from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Welcome back. Turn it back over to Mike for the RFP.
So, for approximately the past year, I've been working with developers interested in redeveloping Unity School property. As part of the proposed project, they've requested a 263.3 by 7-foot piece of property along the eastern region of Riverside Park property to facilitate redevelopment. Downtown property redevelopment is a challenging task because of the many issues that are encountered, which many greenfield developments do not have. This project is no different. There are many items to address with this development, mainly due to the request for park property. Our city charter requires a vote of the people to sell, transfer, dispose of any property in a master plan of the city. Currently, Riverside Park is in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The requested portion of the property is technically in the plan, however, this is undeveloped property. If a sale were to occur, this portion must be removed, or transfer of property ownership, this portion must be removed from the Parks and Master, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. If the portion of property were to be sold, transferred, or disposed of, there is another issue to address. In 2012, the city of Lowell received a Michigan Department of Natural Resources trust fund grant to redevelop a path and the launch at Riverside Park. A condition of receiving this grant requires the park remain in perpetuity, or the grant money must be returned, received must be returned. However, over time, the DNR recognizes situations such as private development approaching park property. The DNR allows a land transfer component whereby the municipality receives new land to use as park property in exchange for the land where the trust fund grant was provided for. In addition, the value and size of land must be equal to or greater than the land being removed from the affected park. In October, I presented this project to the city council, and there was interest. I was directed by them to write an RFP, and at some point, set a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to discuss this, and I followed those directives. The RFP was purposely written prior to a joint meeting so we can review all possibilities coming in and have officially requested information to consider and move forward on this process. This RFP was difficult to develop as the steps provided in the charter must be followed. This parcel of property being considered is a non-conforming parcel and can never be sold on its own per the Michigan Land Division Act. The parcel must be adjacent to a contiguous property and added to it. The RFP was working in a way to address the city charter and the Land Division Act concerns. On November 29, 2018, the city received one bid from the RFP. This bid was from Unity Schools Investors LLC, which includes Dr. Jerry Zanstra and Todd Schell, also known as Unity School Investors LLC. These two individuals approached the city in October regarding this project. They are proposing to transfer a 48-foot by 67-foot parcel or 3,216 square foot of property owned by them to be transferred to the city as park property in return for the 263.2-foot by 7-foot of property at Riverside Park. Also, with that piece of property in your packet, I did attach information about a proposed parklet that could be considered at that site, along with estimated costs. In October, there was discussion about possibly vacating High Street for the development. This has not been formally requested to the city council at this time, or was it part of the RFP process. It may be requested at a later date. Discussion since November has been regarding the surrounding parcels of the development. Currently, Unity Schools Investors own the property south of the proposed development at 238 High Street. There is also concern about boat traffic to the launch, and if the development restricts that. Unity School Investors is willing to work with the city, ensuring a win-win for all involved. There has also been concern about addressing these ancillary issues in at one occurrence, rather than in tandem before the request to transfer occurs. This request on moving, removing the parcel and accepting the new parcel as park property into the Parks and Recreation Master Plan was not recommended by the Park and Recreation Commission at their January 15, 2019 meeting. While the consensus of the Park and Recreation Commission was supportive of the development, they would like to see all of the ancillary issues resolved prior to this transfer. The developer recognizes the ancillary issues pertaining to the development and is supportive of working through the city's concerns. However, they would like the seven feet of property to begin their development. They would like to begin construction of 14 condominiums facing the flat river immediately. Their concern is addressing these issues at one time will stall them and move forward. If they have to wait, there is strong indication this project will not occur. Hence, this project has been laying vacant for 15 years, it might be a long period of time before it would otherwise. If the city is interested in moving forward in this development in the manner requested, the steps, the steps of removing it from the Park and Recreation Master Plan and addressing the DNR trust fund issues must occur. The public hearing for this meeting is required to do this. There has been a change a little bit, in front of you is a resolution, it's Resolution 7-19. We did not, we did not realize until this resolution was drafted this morning, that being, even though this is in the park, this is a Park and Recreation Master Plan, it still needs to adhere to the processes of a modification of a master plan via the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act. So, we didn't realize that until, I honestly didn't, didn't even know that until about 4:00 today, when we received a call from an attorney, from Jessica Wood, informing me of this. What needs to happen is, if the council wishes to move forward, they would need to make a, this resolution would need to make a recommendation to the parks, or sorry, to the Planning Commission to remove that, to recommend, to remove this. There would have to be a public hearing at the Planning Commission that would have to abide by the rules set forth in the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act. And at that point, the Planning Commission would then need to make a recommendation back to the city council, where the city council can then take action to remove it from the park, from the, from the master plan, and then accept the new property into the plan. When that happens, our resolution would then need to be drafted to have the transfer of property occur. That resolution has to sit at council for 20 days before you can take action on it. If that happens, then these, if all those steps happen, then we can move forward, subject to DNR allowing this to happen. DNR still has to sign off on this. However, in our conversations with DNR, they've been, there is nothing that's really alarmed them to what we're trying to do that would, that would, where they would interfere and stop that. So, those are, those are the steps. It should also be noted, in the RFP, there was a request to submit a project pro forma and a list of investors only for the city attorney to review. This has not been provided by the developer as they believe this is a small transaction and would not like to submit. The city attorney has been steadfast with them in requiring to provide it. As an alternative, they are offering to provide a pro forma bond to the city to ensure the project occurs as an addendum to the pro forma. If this is satisfactory to the city council, the city attorney...